Perfect. It is 4:02 PM. Today is June 4th, 2024. This is the Bluff Town Council regular meeting. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Britt Hornsby.
Diane Hook.
Jennifer Davila.
Ann Leffler.
Erin Nelson, serving as town manager.
So the first thing on the list is a long list of approvals of minutes. So the first is approval of the Bluff Town Council's special meeting minutes from May 14th, 2024. Rather than asking on each of these, if everyone's read them, I'm going to assume that you've read them and received all of these. On this particular one, on the special meeting minutes, are there any comments, corrections, anything we need to do?
Do you still want us to approve them each?
Yeah.
Okay, sweetie, then. I motion to approve the council's special meeting minutes from May 14th.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Then all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. The second is the approval of Bluff Town Council work session minutes for May 4th, 2024. Is there any discussion on those minutes, corrections?
I motion to approve the council work session minutes from May 14th.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. The third is Bluff Town Council public hearing minutes on the fiscal year 2024 amended budget. Any corrections or amendments to that?
All right, I motion to approve the public hearing minutes for fiscal year 2024 minute budget.
My second.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next is the minutes from the Bluff Town Council public hearing for fiscal year 2025 tentative budget. Any changes, any modifications?
Motion to approve the hearing minutes for fiscal year 2025 tentative budget.
My second.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Approval of the Bluff Town Council public hearing minutes on salary increase for the town manager. Any dangers, any modifications?
I motion to approve the public hearing minutes on salary increase for town manager.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Bluff Town Council public hearing minutes on the capital improvements plan, any comment, any changes?
I motion to approve the public hearing minutes on capital improvement plan.
Second, the motion.
Any, anything further on that? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Unanimous. And last is the approval of the Bluff Town Council meeting minutes from May 21st, 2024. Any changes, any modifications?
All right, I will motion to approve council meetings, meeting minutes from May 21st, 2024.
My second.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Then it's unanimous. Then this is public comment, there will be a three-minute time limit for any person wishing to make a public comment. If you exceed the three-minute time limit, the meeting controller will mute you. And prior to the meeting, you should put in that box or raise the hand icon if you want to make a public comment. Erin, do we have anyone online that wishes to make a public comment?
Have you muted?
Sorry, thanks. The chat box was open, I don't see anyone in there, and I don't see that anyone has indicated otherwise.
Well, I would like to make a public comment. So, everyone is aware, I think of the gravel pit right of way that's on the west side of town, on the north side of the road, which is directly behind the Dune Houses and Coppercliffs One. I just received word from Jared Beard at UDOT that that right of way has been relinquished by UDOT and that it is now under BLM control, and there will not be a gravel pit. So, I would like to thank all the people who worked on this, which included the Coppercliff One Homeowners Association, whose name I can't remember, Wesley and Carol Shook, myself, Melissa Eggy, Lanell Shock, there were a lot of people working on it, Josh Ewing, and so, thank you, we will avoid having gravel pit in the middle of a residential area. All right. If anybody signed into the chat box at this point? All right, then we can move to, we can move to number one. So I should have had vote on here, but I think we can approve the letter for all in agreement, this would be the report and discussion on Bear's Year's National Monument Management Plan. So Britt, do you want to just summarize a little bit?
Yep, we had a good conversation about it earlier today at our work session. I made the changes you guys asked for, no problem there, just pulled that last sentence out. And yeah, are there any more questions after what we talked about earlier today?
No, I went back and read it again, it looked really just fine. So, can we approve it to have Britt sign it and send it off?
Do we want this on the town's letterhead?
Yeah, I was gonna ask if you could please.
For sure.
Yes. So thanks, Britt, for going to the meetings and keeping on top of it. I'm hoping this is the last management plan we see, but time will tell.
Thank y'all.
The number two, status and update on the design review team meetings that were held May 28th, and then scheduled for today, June 3rd, 2024. Erin, do you want to give an update?
Sure. So the meeting last week was pretty, pretty brief. There were three of us there, and essentially, we talked about the project manager position and wanting to move forward with that hiring process. We also talked about wanting to ensure that RFPs continue to be generated before someone moves into the project manager role. Most importantly, I followed up with the entity that granted us the cultural capital grant. That grant was obtained by Jim Sayers last year, or sorry, year before last, and it was a very short timeline to use it, we got an extension, but we still haven't used all of it. But the entity, their finance director is working to extend the period in which we can use the funds again. And so, I'm working with her to, you know, ideally, we'll do it through the whole fiscal year, so we're not boxed in, but we can still, she didn't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to still use that money for fire suppression. So that's really exciting that they're able to work with us, they would prefer that we use it for that scope rather than anything else, rather than give it back to them. She said, you know, it's, you know, it really would be going back to the state, it can't even be reallocated to other people for this particular grant cycle. So, I will finalize the numbers of the money that we've already used and send that back, but that was a good discussion with DRC to get all of that tied up. And hopefully, we will need to have something signed and back, once they send it to us, to that entity before the end of the fiscal year for their sake and ours, but that's good news. We did not have a meeting today. Janet Nor Davis were available to meet, so we will meet again next week on the 11th.
Well, thanks for working on that other grant and getting the extension, that's really good, because that is something we've, you know, pretty much relied on having to put toward fire suppression, so, thank you. Then, moving to number three, discussion and vote on advertisements for the positions of project manager for the environmental justice government-to-government grant, and the combination note taker and bookkeeper. Again, this was on our work session today, and Erin, if you just want to summarize what you're doing with those postings and job descriptions.
Of course, so, two current positions that we're trying to hire for, project manager for the CCC and a combination note taker, bookkeeper role. The note taker would cover all of our meetings, public hearings, as well as planning and zoning, and then bookkeeper, there are quite a lot of duties that go into what Linda has been doing for these past five years, and it's six years, very much appreciated. I request that we run the ads in the San Juan Record, directing people to our website so they can get the full job description, it'll be kind of the same process where people will send their resumes to Anne, resume and cover letter to Anne, and then we will conduct interviews for those who would meet the experience requirements. And I would suggest to the council approve that we kind of post these a little bit more widely. There are definitely some free areas where we can do these job postings, but potentially reaching out to some of the other papers in the immediate region would be recommended to get broad swath on both of these probably.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns or thoughts about this?
We should also post it to Workforce Services.
Yeah, that one's definitely on my list. Thanks, Jen.
The candidate, the one of the two candidates that came from out of town, did that candidate mention where he became aware of the posting for the project manager?
He saw it in the paper up in Moab.
I'm wondering if that's worth posting again? Before, do we post in High Country News?
I think we did.
We had talked about sending it to the Durango Herald Cortez, I can't remember what the Cortez paper is, Cortez Monazuma Journal, I don't remember. I don't know if we ever did that or not, I know we contacted Tamara, but...
I don't think it got to that one, I know Navajo Times was also on our list.
Janet had also suggested that maybe we post in Page and Flagstaff.
Okay.
So, did everybody have an opportunity to read the job descriptions today or yesterday? And I think we should, you know, vote to approve the job descriptions and the reposting of the project manager. So someone can make a motion.
I motion that we post the job listing for the project manager in a wider swath, open until filled, and that we post the positions for the bookkeeper slash note taker for the town of Bluff.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I didn't hear Lou, but I'm assuming...
I was muted there, but yes, I eyed. I'm also sitting here thinking that so many people look online for jobs, and those classifieds will show up online searches, I suppose, but I just wonder if there's something, you know, Craigslist, you know, anyway, something along that line that, I know people have gotten jobs in Bluff before off of Craigslist, and I don't know how that works as a town, but anyway, maybe look at some of those online things that people are searching.
Workforce Services online.
Well, the newspapers will be too, but I'm just thinking of like classifieds on some of those other platforms, but anyway, I don't have a specific suggestion, just tossing it out to think about.
Well, at this point, any suggestion we have, like get an airplane with a flyer behind it, those jobs to fill in Bluff, you know. And again, same thing we talked about this morning, or whenever we met this morning, is if you know people, reach out, you know, we really would like to have these filled in June and be able to go into the fiscal year with a little more bandwidth, so. All right, then, discussion of changes to the fiscal year 2024 amended budget. You did a great job summarizing all of the changes that you captured and we met previously and talked about the budget. Does anyone have any changes that you want to make at this point, any suggestions? Well, I think unless somebody has something that they want to talk about, we had a pretty detailed discussion today, and then we would just ask Erin to quote finalize, end quote, so that we can vote on the 11th, next Tuesday's meeting. I'm hopeful that since we've discussed these, we would just be able to do like a five to 10-minute business meeting before we start the work session, and not have to, you know, prolong our day by having more of a meeting. So I'm not going to add anything else to that meeting unless there's some emergency that comes up. Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
All right, then, the same thing for number five, discussion of changes to the fiscal year 2025 budget. Does anybody have any great revelations after we talked about that today? And again, Erin did a great job presenting and making the changes. I did talk to Michael Havikin today, and he does want to keep the $10,000 in for engineering services. So, I think that Lou and I have a plan to meet with, as a roads committee with Michael on Monday, but for the purposes of moving forward, that $10,000, Erin should just go ahead and stay in, and we'll work with him on the roads piece and bring it to the, you know, bring it forward for whatever we have to do to, to secure those services. Any questions or thoughts on the 2025? So now we're down to discussion and vote on capital improvements project and prioritization. I didn't think to ask this, but Erin, do you have this on a matrix?
So, I don't, I don't have it on a matrix with like priorities, the last we had talked, here, I can share my screen really fast, so you can see the projects, and I did not get it updated since our discussion this morning, but we had had, just a second, there it goes. All right, so this was the list that we had. Didn't it have, I don't think we had time to talk about the prioritization. You know, in some ways, talking fiscal years, that kind of helps us prioritize, I guess, but it does feel like this project, this still means a little bit of work before it would be in kind of a finished state.
In terms of the 2025 tentative budget talks, does it matter if we haven't prioritized until we get to our third meeting?
No, I don't think so, I think, so I will tell you that the first one's probably not in the budget, sorry, it is not yet slated for the tentative budget. The second item is included in the tentative budget, and the third item is included in the tentative budget. So those, those are all there, and already something that could be voted upon. And I think in terms of doing the project plan, excuse me, capital improvement plan justice, I definitely would want it in a little bit more finalized state, and it doesn't need to be completed before the end of our fiscal year. So, perhaps this is something that we can spend a little bit more time on in work sessions, I'd like to have a little bit more meat to it, it feels like I've kind of thrown some spaghetti at the wall, but I'd like to get a little bit more feedback, especially regarding, you know, the dates and the costs. While I am okay with numbers, I definitely would love to have someone come and do a red line on, on a lot of this, especially those project costs. I don't think it makes any sense to just have one person say, hey, here it is, looks good. And then, yeah, you know, more, more meat, and then I think that will also help the council in terms of prioritization to our strategic plan.
I think that's a good idea, so, I can put it on the work session on the 11th for folks to give more thought to it, and maybe go, each of us go through this and kind of in your own way, set the priority that you think it should be given at this point, and see how close we are to all of us being on the same page, or at least the majority of us. And this doesn't have the the playground unless it's included in the parks, no.
No, no playgrounds yet, but I can update and send it out, so it's the top of everyone's email, and then really, truly, please tear apart some of these numbers, and get some better estimates for me, please.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good idea. Does anybody have questions, thoughts? Does that sound like a good plan that we work on in the work session next week? So unless there's something further on that, then we'll move to number seven. Financial report and the status of fiscal year 2024 audit field work by Larson and Company.
So the May financial report is not complete yet, I always have to wait a couple days after the first for the state to complete the PTIF reinvestment interest, and so I'm assuming tomorrow they will have sent that. The audit field work, so Larson and Company contacted Dave, our accountant, and came up with, through the field work between August 12th to 15th. And so I don't know if that means they're going to come here, they've done it virtually for the last couple of years, or if it means that the bulk of what we do will happen those days, because usually the audit takes about six weeks, with the first couple of weeks being the most, but the target right now is starting at August 12th.
And there was an email from Larson today on the engagement letter, asking if we were going to do, if we were going to need a single audit, and so, I wasn't, I should have been clear with what he was asking, but we don't need a single audit unless we've received and spent $750,000 in one fiscal year of federal money. So, even though we've been awarded the EPA grant and the contract is now approved in the 2024 fiscal year, we won't have spent $750,000. But this is a really good reminder, and I let the contact person know that we are doing the regular audit, not the single audit, which is a bigger ticket item and more money. But it's a good reminder that, and Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, but all the federal money we receive gets lumped into one dollar amount, and once we hit $750,000 on expenditures in a fiscal year, we move to a much higher level type of audit. So, that could be where we are for fiscal year 2025.
Yes, it looks like, based on the current tentative budget for next year, we, we will probably hit that if all of our renovations go to plan.
Well, thank goodness for people who have mathematical minds, because this is, this was going to, this is going to be a lot of work, which is why we need, we really need that project manager in place so that we can actually start the work and not, you know, kind of be in the middle of fiscal year and trying to get some things done. Jen?
Does our state grant, is that included in those dollar monies, the $400,000?
Nope, it's the, just the federal.
So that would be the EPA grant, and then, and then...
USDA grant.
Okay.
And then, obviously, if there was anything else that we went after that was federal, if we spent it, but we, it's actually, you have to have spent that much. So it could be that we get to the end of 2025 and we haven't spent that amount, but we certainly have the capacity in terms of the dollars to hit that. Erin and I had talked about it a few months ago, and we were made aware of it with Linda. The scary part for me was thinking about, what if we hit it in 2025 and then again in 2026? It's like, please don't, don't hit it two years in a row, let's just try to get, spend as much money as possible in one year, and then the rest of it, but... So, thanks Linda for getting ready with that audit, it's been a lot of work. Number eight, the summary of the Utah League of Cities and Towns in Southeastern Rural Development meeting, evening that I went to on May 20th in Price, was really interesting in that, I, the best part was I had about a 15 or 20-minute conversation with Cameron Deal, who's the executive director of the league, and he made a suggestion, which I will follow up on in the next couple of days, but there are two legislators that are working to craft some legislation that would, I'm going to say require, it might be suggest, in the legislation that public lands be used for housing in communities that are in dire need of housing, which would mean sitland BLM lands for us. And so I was going to follow up with the legislature, legislators to get a little more information about what this means, but we have everything but 17% is public lands right now, so that's an interesting piece of legislation, and I don't know if they're talking about doing some kind of funding, some kind of... And I don't know if they're talking about doing some kind of funding, some kind of mandate. But it ties into Governor Cox's push for, I'm not going to use the word affordable, for housing. And I think that was really about it. I talked to Jade Powell for a few minutes. And then there was a panel with Elaine Gisler and a legislator and Jared Barrett, talking about housing situation and bluff. Any questions? Well, thanks for approving my being able to go. It was, I think it was useful in terms of touching base with the league. All right, number nine is the summary of the 2024 County Zoning Ordinance and Maps Meeting that was May 30th, 2024. Linda, were you able to go to that? And you were not, correct?
Yes, there were two of these meetings. One was in Spanish Valley and the other one was in Monticello. They were both for unincorporated areas in the county. But so we could have that in bluff. So the one in Monticello, there were 10 people. It turned out I was the only one there that was not involved directly with planning and zoning. So I was only, I was the public, basically. So I talked to some of the people that were there for a while, talked to Mac. A lot of it was actually about short-term rentals in unincorporated areas like Mexican Hat, other places. And they were still working on how to manage those. Glamping was part of it. And so it turned out to be a really informal meeting where people just got together in little groups and talked about whatever their questions were, which were mostly short-term rentals. So it was, I think it was good that I was there because it, you know, usually when bluff is invited to something, we go. And so that's always been important, but it was pretty low key.
Any questions of Linda about the meeting?
Linda, I have a question. The question about the STRs, was that to ban them? Are they trying to ban them? Or are they trying to encourage them? Or what was the topic?
Manage them. They're trying to manage them along with glamping. And I feel like there was a third thing. Those were the main two, though. So there there were two parts to their plan. And the first part pretty much, they voted on, they've been, I think, planning and zoning. So the second part is the short-term rental glamping and possibly RV parts, something along like that line. And so that is the piece that they're still discussing how to manage.
Which I thought was interesting in talking to Melissa Riggs, who's our representative on the county planning and zoning. And this affects unincorporated lands in San Juan County. I found it interesting that there's really not been any discussion at least publicly as to if the disconnect is successful, if there's a plan for that 9,500 acres. It's kind of left out of the discussion because we're incorporated. So they could be going through a whole planning process and then have 9,500 more acres to discuss. But Melissa will keep us posted as well. Right now, there's not a whole lot of, I think it's being presented to the commissioners in about two weeks. But I'll update everybody. Anything else on that? Number 10, report on planning and zoning, Lou?
Okay, yes. They had a meeting between our last meeting when I updated you, there was one on May 15th. There wasn't a whole lot to report, but I'll give you a rough, a brief summary. First, there were no land use clearances. There, they did take the sign ordinance. I reported to them that the sign ordinance is a standalone ordinance now, and it is posted to our website. And so they were glad to hear that. And that is a standalone thing that was accomplished. They're still working on forms. They're trying to do like a flow chart of when an LUC, land use clearance, is required, when a building permit is required, when neither are, that sort of thing. If it's less than a 200 square foot structure, they're thinking it does not need a land use clearance unless it's going to be occupied. But it does to meet all the setbacks and all of that. So somehow they'll have to have a chart that says you need it if, you know, you need to be within these parameters. Seems like you might still need to come to them to make sure you do. But that's, they're kind of discussing those kinds of things. They did invite KNC owner Vance to talk about his canopy lighting. And he came and there were questions of whether it was new lighting or existent. And it was existing lighting. They rewired something when they did all this concrete and all this tank fixing. And the KNC sign has been lit more than what it used to be, used to get turned off. And he said that they're going to rewire that portion. And everything else is what's been there. But he came and did a little discussion with them. The Hanson Group that's doing subdivision, they had no update from them. They may, tomorrow night's the next meeting, so they might have an update then, but nothing up till now. And then some of the planning and zoning commissioners were concerned that a building permit would be required to replace a roof. And so they called San Juan County and they were assured that if you're repairing a roof, you do not need a building permit here, taking shingles off, putting new shingles on, so on. You don't need a building permit. And that was about it. Questions?
When's their next meeting, Lou? Do you know?
It's tomorrow, tomorrow at 6 o'clock. And I have the agenda here. Let me just see. Yeah, so Erin is on with the Rural Communities Grant. It looks like they want to discuss canopy lighting as it appears in our dark sky ordinance. There's sign application forms, there's sign application from a couple of people. Berzer's Partnership and Bluff City Historic Preservation. Valerie Brown and her real estate signs. And an application for change of use. That's tomorrow at 6 o'clock.
Any questions for Lou? Any thoughts? Okay. Then we move to number 11, a discussion on participants for Bluff Water Works Strategic Plan. As we're all aware, Bluff Water Works is doing a situation with Gary Lichtenstein doing the strategic plan for them. And they've asked that we have two representatives to join in on that. I know that, well, let's start with this. Is there anyone who's interested of being on that? Okay, Linda? Jen?
I kind of think that I will be included regardless. So maybe it makes more sense for somebody else to take a TOB spot than me. Maybe I won't be included. I don't, I don't know, you know? It's gone either way in the past, so.
Yeah, and, you know, I thought about that in terms of looking at the council of like, if you're the note taker secretary, are you, would you automatically be included? And you'd be getting all the information firsthand anyway? Would you not be? I don't know if they're, if it's restricted to two or if they'd be willing to entertain more than two of us being on there.
There have been a few things that I've been excluded on already in the process. I didn't see what the questions were that they sent to the town. Or I mean, to the, to the water board members. So, you know, I mean, I know I'm not seeing everything. So that might be a question to ask.
And go ahead, Lou?
I didn't mean to interrupt. I just, I was thinking about this prior because I have an interest in it as well. But I was thinking that the people that are interested on their side and the people that are interested on our side, we just say, pass each other's names to the other part and have them pick who they want to work with. So we say, you know, there's three or four of us, or five of us, whatever, that are willing. Who would you like to work with? And we say, who are you putting up? And then we pick theirs.
I don't think we are going to have that opportunity to pick theirs. I'd be really surprised if we, because that's not how we did our strategic plan. And I don't, this is their strategic plan. They get to invite who they want. And I would imagine all of them will be involved. That would be my, my guess. We can certainly ask those questions. The next meeting is a week from Wednesday. So we could ask these questions. We wouldn't have to make the decision today. I am going to decline to participate. I think that it, and this is my rationale for it. I know that I, people are tired of me saying this, I am not running again. So in a year and a half, I will be off. We'll be making decisions as a group as to how we function with BWW. And that's a big picture. I don't feel like I need to take up the seat to do the strategic planning. Certainly, I'll have opinions. But I think it's more beneficial to, one, have people who have a newer lens, like say Britt, people who have this historical lens, like Linda, Jenner, Lou. I came in in the middle of the game and I just think that it would be best if I not sit out, but that I don't be one of the participants if they limit it to two. If they limited it to five of us, I'd certainly be wanting to do it. But I'd like to make sure that everybody else gets an opportunity. So do we want to hold this until our third meeting of the month and we ask these questions at BWW next week?
And what about our town manager? Like, is that, as far as long-term things, does that make sense that we consider nominating her?
It's a good, it's a good question for BWW, but the town manager wasn't included in the elected officials piece. And that's what they were looking at, is the elected officials. So, you know, these are all really good questions. Again, I don't think we need to decide tonight because it's a longer process and it's, I don't think it, Linda thought it started like in October, the actual meetings. And I can't remember.
I think the actual meetings are very much dependent on Gary's fire schedule. If he doesn't get called out on wildfire fires, which kind of seems doubtful at this point. Depending, you know, with the fire season already flaring up the way it is, I think he will probably get called. It's, from my understanding, it was very dependent on that. So whenever he's done with fire schedule is kind of when the ball will get rolling at this point. I think that they are also considering including some community members in this process as well, not just, not just the two town boards.
Right, right. My understanding is that's a broader thing of stakeholders, like we did in our strategic planning. You know, included BWW, included different groups of people. So we can take the time and ask the questions of them next week. Jen, do you think that I should ask to specifically be on the agenda to ask those questions?
It will be on the agenda, I'm sure. And usually the board is pretty good about involving the audience in, you know, listening to questions when the subject is being discussed.
So because it's conceivable that this will be more participation by, from the town than is usual at the BWW meetings for this one, I'm just going to notice this on the public notice website. Because I haven't been concerned with Linda, myself and Jen being there because Jen's in official capacity with BWW. And I've tried not to jump in and offer town opinions. But I think this is clearly a town, Bluff Town Council question, like how many of us, what's the best way of doing it? So I will make sure that, and everybody remind me, that I get it on the Utah Public Notice website. And we post so that they know that we might be talking about the, some kind of town aspect business. Lou?
This is, it's mostly on topic, but I've wondered about this with planning and zoning, with Bluff Water Works, with these kind of repeat meetings. If one of the council wants to go, it seems like that should be open for them to be able to go and listen, report back whatever or not, but just sit and listen, whether they're involved or not in the actual discussion. And I wondered if there's something on the public notice website that just says a blanket thing that there may be council members at these meetings all year round.
So are you thinking that it could go on like planning and zoning's notice or on our notice? That's why we do it under our.
Yeah, on ours, on our notice, just saying there are these planning and zoning meetings scheduled during these dates. There are these Bluff Water Works meetings on these dates. There may be several council members at any of these meetings is what it seems to me makes sense. Instead of restricting elected officials from going to get information or whatever, it would just be understood that any of those meetings could have any of these people at them. And it would be posted. But just wondering if there was something that we could do that way.
In my previous discussions with Chris, my answer would be no, we can't because it's not a chance social encounter. It falls within three of us being in the same place at an official, at a meeting. But I can ask him if you can do a blanket one. My guess is the answer is no. We just have to post it. It could be, it could be a different answer. So I will definitely, when we talk to him next time, ask him that.
Okay, or maybe even through the public notice website, people like, or the league find out how many. It just seems like we could do a blanket thing, just to keep people from feeling like they cannot go. They've got to get information third hand or whatever, especially whether or not recorded. But anyway, that's all. Thank you. Just thought.
It would certainly save some work on my part, but this one I'll post until I get, have a chance to talk to Chris again about something or call the league. It's, is there, okay, let me just go back to this. Number 12, Community Cleanup Day with the Bluff Fort. And so this was a moving target. And I'm not quite clear since I haven't had a chance to pop over to the fort. But we talked about, the directors came in and met with us and we talked about the June 3rd or June 7th as the date that we would do a public joint cleanup. And then while I was out of town, I believe the directors came in and talked to Erin and it moved to June 10th. So it's June 10th, 8:30 to 10:00 to avoid the heat. And I have Brant Murray, he's going to communicate. He either did it today or he'll do it tomorrow with UDOTA, with Freeman Sam getting vests and bags. And I have to communicate with the fort because I'm not sure what section of road they committed to because they didn't, I didn't hear anything more back on what section they want to do. But as much as possible, it'd be nice to have as many of us in the community as we can. And we'll just have to do an email blast on where the section is, put it on the website.
Don't we have vests that we purchased for the solstice thing?
We do have some, yep. We do have some, yep, and UDOT or not UDOT, the fort has a few. So we might have enough without borrowing UDOTs, but Brant was going to to ask again about getting vests in case we need them. There I think they were thinking there'd be like eight fort people, eight to ten. And it would be nice if we pick if they picked a spot that really has a lot of trash. But the question I have is, are we okay with talking with Steve Helgerson about doing a trash pickup? From wherever we're doing it so that. UDOT will do it. They don't obviously don't charge. They'll pick up the orange bags. The problem is is that. When they're actually working, it's not like they're driving around to pick up trash bags. And they could sit at the side of the road for a time period, which isn't ideal. So is any, does anyone have an objection to us talking to Steve Helgerson about doing a pickup?
I would I would think I'd just stick with the standard procedure myself.
Well, if you say standard procedure, the standard procedure that we've used in the past is Steve Helgerson. So is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm just thinking about highway cleanup systems.
Whenever we whenever we clean up for Bearsir's Partnership, we have two different miles we'll do. You go ahead and pick the stuff up just because they're not sitting out there for a long time. And I think we just drop it off at the UDOT shed is how it's worked in the past is just. Tell them, hey, we're going to fill up the truck and drop it off, but Steve can just take it and dump it. Yeah, either way, I've never left it out on the road for just fear of it taking forever.
Feel like it has a tendency to get rescattered. If that happens too, you never know what's going to rip into a bag and then all your works for nothing.
That that's my feeling and I know that when. There was a resident who picked up trash the year that she lived here and that's what she. Some of them would just sit or get ripped open, so. You're muted.
Sorry, I think I muted myself instead of unmuting myself. The year we picked up trash along the cutoff road, that's happened. I was I was riding a lot out there on those days and it probably took. Over a week, if not longer than that, for them to come through and pick up those bags.
Yeah, I mean, that's not their their primary focus, so. I would really like to just talk to Steve and make arrangements to have those picked up.
And and I would, if if that's the case, I'd coordinate with him so that it's on a day that he's available. You know, Mondays aren't great, so it'll at least be overnight.
Yeah. Okay, I will do that. Then we are the others. There any other other?
I guess I have one other sensor looking at. Just detail things. Over the time when you were gone, I I met up with the air conditioning guy and needed in a couple of places. The the key box needs to get relocated back to a place that we all have access to it. Because those keys were not anywhere to be found. So in an emergency or when somebody needs in someplace. I think we all need to be able to get access into the keys to let us into the bathrooms and the storage rooms and the. Like the outside shed is locked up. There are lots of places that I could not get into. Eventually was able to, but had to, you know, scrounge around for keys and just takes longer. And if there's an emergency, it's even longer yet. So if we could get that key box, it just got moved during the the construction phase of the remodel in the. The community center. So it just needs to be relocated back from wherever it went off to.
Could this be put on the agenda? Because it's it's. When it's on other, we we can't, it's really hard to locate it. So could this be put on the agenda?
Sure, I can put it on the agenda. I'm just making a note.
I think it's just better to have a community, you know, lockbox where everybody has a key to get into that area instead of having a. Everybody have a bazillion keys to try to. Keep track of. I think it's just a little simpler, a little more refined, I guess. And the lockboxes on the outside of the buildings are working great. Those are those are awesome.
Yeah, that really helped a lot.
Yeah, it's great. And the lights look nice at night, I might add. They look great. I don't know if they're on all night, but they do look nice when they're on.
Yeah, I don't know if they're on all night or not.
I think they are.
It'd be nice if they were turned off at.
I'll try to pay more attention the next time I'm riding home.
I think they're on all night because they're on most of the day too, and we don't have access to some of those switches. They're in the senior center, so.
So those would if they have a little dark or a little motion sensor added to them or something, then they could kick on that way or.
Yeah, let's. I'm adding the keys to the. Agenda for next time. Aaron, did you have something?
Yes, just a notice. There have been some flyers around town, but I wanted to publicly say. On Wednesday, June twelfth, there is a free event at the Bluff Community Center from ten to two. Hosted by the Women's Business Center of Utah, although the event is for anyone. And they are going to provide business resources. They have a lot of stuff actually available on their website, the Women's Business Center of Utah. But they're coming down to visit. They'll have a couple of these events throughout the county, but ours is on Wednesday, the twelfth, and we're encouraging folks to attend if they have. You know, if they have a business or interested in starting a business, they have resources available for all levels of of growth, so.
Great, that's good to know. Is there? There is a flyer for that?
There is, yes.
Did and it it seems like it went out on Lois's.
Yeah, I just sent it out through Lois's and then I know the county is also trying to circulate stuff on social media. I believe I've seen one at the post office as well, and if not, I'll make sure it gets posted.
It's it's at the post office. It's on our marquee. So so yeah, it's out there, but we should have another blast right before.
And food and drink is provided by Twin Rocks Trading Post and Cafe, so lunch provided.
Wow, well, that looked at a crowd. All right, is there any other other? And if not, it's four fifty nine PM.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, guys. See you later.
Yeah, bye.